I'm allergic.
Pass it on if you'd like some.
No, not at all. No, doesn't even seem that bad.
I'd like to call the order, the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board here on Wednesday, February 1st, 5:00 p.m. The Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer. Absent. Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Musich.
Present.
Commissioner Menns.
Here.
Commissioner Elper.
Present.
Commissioner Abene.
Present.
Vice President Smith.
Here.
President Forney.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Cares, okay, on to approval of the agenda, all those in favor.
I would move the agenda.
Thank you. Second. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Action carries, and just to point out, is the standards and conduct, we will not be having that this evening. On to then the approval of the minutes of January 18th, 2023.
I'll move the minutes from January 18th, 2023.
Second. Thank you, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries, okay, on to reports of officers. Superintendent Bangora, take it over, please.
Thank you, President Forney, good evening Commissioners, good to see everybody. We'll get started here, get some really good information to share with you and the community, so we'll start with citywide events. The visitor services events team hosted two citywide events in January. On Monday, January 16th, the annual Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration took place at Martin Luther King Jr. Park. The event drew a very nice crowd, both in person and over Facebook Live, with highlights that included a keynote speech from Larry McKenzie, musical performance by Ray Covington, and a spoken word performance by 13-year-old Jemaya Trueblood, which drew a standing ovation from the crowd. This year's Living Dream Award was presented to the Sene Foundation, and thank you, Chris, for everybody that was there, I know you really enjoyed it, but the, this young lady, Jemaya Trueblood, did a really wonderful, wonderful poem, and so, thank you for also being there for that event, all that could attend. The annual Lake Harriet Winter Kite Festival took place this past Saturday, January 28th. Despite the very cold temperatures, large crowds of 3,500-plus enjoyed a wonderful day at Lake Harriet. Kites of all shapes, sizes, colors, and themes filled the air over frozen Lake Harriet, and a fun family festival that also featured a kids DJ smores and yard games. Wonderful event. So we're celebrating Black History Month in Minneapolis Parks, and wanted to highlight that real quickly. So we're celebrating Black History Month in parks throughout the city with several events and a variety of programs for youth, featuring art, music, food, field trips, movies, and more. The events include community bonding event at Pershing on February 15th, a Minnesota Black baseball event at Pottawhorne on February 22nd, and a celebration of Black history at North Commons on February 24th. Events and programs details are online, so if you have an opportunity to attend one of these, we'd love to see you, and I think they're really wonderful events, I will be at them, so please stop by if you can. Adult athletics, winter adult boomball, volleyball, basketball, dodgeball, and pond hockey now are in the mid-season, and participants are braving the Minnesota winter weather to compete in their favorite sports. There are currently over 500 teams participating in winter adult athletics. Aquatics, currently there are over 700 participants in winter programs at the Phillips Aquatic Center. NPRB is beginning recruitment for summer lifeguards positions, and yes, we do begin early. We will provide all necessary training to become a lifeguard in our park system, so a young person out there, or parents or anybody, please get them involved, it's a wonderful job and wonderful opportunity to get a skill and to get a paycheck, and we need you. Golf, winter recreation is in full swing at Worth, Columbia, and Hiawatha golf courses. Clubhouses at Hiawatha and Columbia are open from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Saturdays and Sundays, and the trailhead at Worth is open daily. Although we are still in the middle of the winter, golf is gearing up for the 2023 season kickoff, look for information to be out this coming week. Ice arenas, ice arenas have been very busy hosting dozens of high school and tournament games, great job by Emily Wolf and staff. We're still looking for Zamboni drivers, if you're interested, contact Parade Ice Garden. It's a great part-time gig if you want to be a Zamponi driver, so just I'm saying. Outdoor rinks, all outdoor rinks have opened and are ready for use. Rings will be open through February 21st, of course, weather permitting, as we always say. Recreation Centers, North Service Area, youth from North Commons Park were able to get haircuts at the new year, for the new year, from Malik at World Class Barbers. I think we still haven't changed, there we go. Northeast Service Area, this week, Northeast Parks Preschool, the theme was Nurses, Doctors, and Health. In class, they talked about professions in healthcare, the body, and even got to look through a microscope. Logan Park hosted the monthly senior luncheon with, with a excitement, a visit from the North Suburban Chorus. So there they are, in their wonderful vests and outfits, so it's great to see them. Upper South Service Area, youth from East Phillips Park attended Sounds of Blackness, music from Martin at the Ordway. The kids had never been to the theater and had a great time listening to the music and honoring the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. East Phillips had an honor of hosting the Northando Zulu, the director of the Black Storytelling Alliance. Director Zulu shared storytelling and a talk about Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. She led the teenagers in a story-writing activity to help them find and use their voice in their stories. In the Southwest Service Area, our new Spark Studio Specialist Ezra Maddox took the construction of the, or took the construction as an opportunity to begin working with youth at Whittier Park and building relationships. Last week, they worked on turning the temporary construction wall into a canvas of youth street art, and what I love about this is that even in construction, we're kind of get these kids excited about what's coming and having their voices and their art being shown, so that's really wonderful work, and so, it's great to see that. Armitage Park hosted its first tie-dye snowman program, over 30 people registered and closer to 50 participated on an MPS school release day. Lower South Service Area, McCray Park had held their first Fire and Ice Winter Event, field Regina Northrop Neighborhood Group sponsored hot cocoa and smores, NPRB naturalists offered snowshoeing, and the Art Rageous brought a face painter and icicle craft making for this fun event. Upper South and Lower South Service Area, Youth Line took five youth from Pottawhorne and East Phillips Park to base camp for a five-hour leadership training. Youth took a leadership assessment, learned their style, and had discussions about values while completing a team challenge. Spark Studios, Spark Studios will, staff have been outreach to community members near Harrison Recreation Center about the new Spark Studio. Studio will open to the public and programs scheduled starting the week of February 13th, and we're really, really excited about the Spark Studios and will be having, of course, our opening, which is going to be really invite-only, but we're very excited about that, and looking forward to all of you being there at this amazing place. Full Service Community Schools, Bethune Full Service Community Schools recently established a partnership with Eastside Food Co-op, who has agreed to provide food at no cost for all Bethune full-service events and workshops. Eastside Food Co-op Cooperative Community Fund is also donating a one-time payment of $5,000 to Bethune Full Service to support the families at Bethune School. Thank you to the Eastside Food Co-op, and wonderful work again by Bryce, who is doing great work there, and just incredibly proud of that, and yeah, just wonderful. We want to talk about forestry. Forestry crews are focused on routine pruning of boulevard trees. Most of the work is done using the aerial lift truck rather than manually climbing trees. Small articulated loaders are used to consolidate brush so that it can be easily be picked up by our log loaders. The mechanization of the forestry operation has reduced employee injuries since being initiated over 10 years ago. Environmental Management, winter lake sampling is underway at the Environmental Management Department. Water quality staff have completed winter sampling at Breda Makaska, Diamond, Cedar, Isles, Loring, Pottawhorne, and Worth Lakes, and will also collect water, winter water quality data on Harriet, Hiawatha, Nakomas, and Spring Lake yet this winter. Winter lake sampling is a very laborious, as staff snowshoe out to the sampling location and carry their equipment in sleds. It is important to collect the water quality data throughout the year as conditions change between seasons. Ice thickness is variable across the lakes this winter. Strong and weak ice are layered with slush, water, and snow. Unsafe areas remain under bridges, in channels, and near storm sewer outlets. So please always be careful out there. Southwest Service Area, Lake Ice, Lake of the Isles, Pottawhorne, and Lake Nakomas update. This year has been challenging for lake ice on many fronts, some of the reasons being poor weather conditions leading to lack of ice depth. With, with unsafe ice conditions earlier this season, staff were unable to get equipment out on the ice to remove snow. The snow, in turn, insulated the ice to further slow down the process by creating a slush between the snow and the ice. Our teams have had to pivot to overcome the challenges presented by this season's weather. The Lake Nakomas team worked with Athletics and the Southwest Service Area teams to move the pond hockey rinks to Armitage Park for leagues. Doing so allowed games to go on with delay and kept parkkeepers and equipment off questionable ice. The Lake of the Isles team switched gears and started flooding the snow on their ice sheet. After several weeks of flooding and work to smooth out the ice surface, they were able to build hockey rinks and open the warming room and ice rinks to the public. The Pottawhorne team slowly removed snow when weather and ice conditions allowed. Great work by our team, I know it's very challenging and frustration by the community, but thank you again to our team and the work they've done and, and to get our ice rinks up and running, so thank you for their great work. I know it's been frustration for a lot of our Commissioners and for our community, so. NPRB Equipment Shop, NPRB Equipment Services accepted delivery of the new Bobcat Toolcat in January. The Toolcat is a versatile machine with adaptability for over, for up to 40 different implements and can be utilized year-round for various tasks. In the winter months, the unit will be used for, for plowing, sweeping, snowblowing, and sanding of plow routes. In the summer months, the Toolcat will be used for various maintenance activities such as soil conditioning, seeding, and brush mowing. This unit is replacing the seven-year-old snow removal unit that was utilized only in the winter months. Again, really excited about, I get excited about these things, and to see this, how we're being efficient and using equipment to do more things than just one is really exciting, so great work again to Jeremy and his team, and Dale and all of them, again, on the work they're doing. Trade Shops, North Service Service Area, Dan Fall Carpenter Foreman and Sean McGinty, carpenter, worked together to get the final touches done on the Harrison Spark Studio. Dan and Sean were partnered with the Planning Division, IT Department, Recreation Staff, and Spark Studio Staff to do this work. Dan and Sean really enjoyed being part of the project and are looking forward to helping with the rest of the Spark Studios as they are built, and this just shows a great way that we work together in departments to do some wonderful things, so thank you to the coordination for everybody to make Spark Studios a wonderful place, and it's going to be opening again soon. We want to quickly talk about planning. The public is encouraged to check out, I'm sorry, Cedar Lake and Lake of the Isles Long Rage Plan opens for 45-day comment period. The public is encouraged to check out the long-term plan for Cedar Lake, Lake of the Isles, and the surrounding parkland and trails. On January 25th, 2023, the NPRB published its draft plan for Cedar Lake and Lake of the Isles, Cedar Isles Plan for 45-day public comment period ending March 10th. The plan was created throughout three years of discussion with park users, park employees, and stakeholders, stakeholder organizations about the future of the two lakes, including the community advisory committee, which met 13 times to vet and refine ideas that are now part of the plan. The Cedar Isles Plan outlines 20- to 30-year vision with long-term strategies to maintain and improve Cedar Lake, Lake of the Isles, Dean Parkway, and a portion of the Cedar Lake Regional Trail. These park spaces are part of Minneapolis chain of Lakes Regional Park, the most popular park in Minnesota, with 7.5 million visits in 2021. It draws people from across Minneapolis, the metro area, and the entire state. No immediate major changes or projects based on the Cedar Isles Plan are scheduled following the plan approval. Smaller-scale projects could be implemented without the first few years. These could include safety upgrades at critical intersections, new or repaired paths, or adding seasonal bathrooms. Development of the Cedar Isles Plan is the final part of a decade-long process by NPRB to create and approve master plans for every park in Minneapolis park system. Areas including the Cedar Isles Plan are the only areas in a park system that do not have an adopted plan. So please, visit the Cedar Isles Plan Project page to learn more about the draft plan and place your comments on the plan, we look forward to that. Brenmeyer Meadows Park Construction to pause for winter. Work on the $4.8 million project will pause for the winter following a successful first phase of construction, which moved 55,000 cubic yards of earth. The two water quality ponds and elevation of the two premier athletic fields have taken shape. Construction will resume in March and April, depending on the weather. Construction of the two water quality ponds, two new parking lots, new trails, play area, premier ball, ballfields, picnic areas, and the native landscape greenway will be completed in the summer of 2023. Really excited about this, I mean, really excited to see what's going to happen this summer. North Commons Phase, Park Phase 1 Improvements. After a successful concept options release event for North Commons Phase 1 Improvements Project, community engagement continues with two more open houses at North Commons Community Center on Tuesday, February 7th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and on Saturday, February 25th, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. Additionally, there are two 12 noon virtual open house planned for February 6th and February 24th, so we ask, please join us and engage with staff at these events to ensure community-driven process informs the design process. Greco Park, another really wonderful project. Completion of the construction documents for Greco Park is almost done. The design process begins, or began, in 2021 with community engagement, followed by approval of the park master plan in 2022. The first phase of the park improvements will include a new park building, large central lawn and performance green, river promenade and walk, naturalized stormwater management infrastructure, and extensive naturalized habitat zones. First phase improvements will be publicly bid in February 2023. Two more, almost done. Botno Field Park, yes. Design of play area and park improvements is about to begin at Botno Field Park in northeast Minneapolis. Pre-designed work has completed, completed in late 2022, and the process to hire a construction, a consultant is currently underway. The play area improvements are anticipated to begin construction in late 2023, and the remainder of the park area improvements to follow in 2025. And the last one, the last update I'd like to show here, is from Support Services and through Archives. The NPRB Archives ended 2022 with its busiest quarter of the year. External requests for information surpassed internal requests, and research range from the histories of recreation programs and park properties to environmentally-focused questions about Dutch elm disease, wetland restoration, and weed control. Elwell-related community research also ticked up as the Archives hosted groups who are interested in learning about the property records we have on site in paper format. The Archives provided historic images of winter scenes for the employee newsletter and social media use, and observed Native American Heritage Month in November with images from a 1979 Native American festival at Whittier Park. Engagements with the NPRB Archives and digitized historic collections is now included. The Parks for All Comprehensive Plan Dashboard. NPRB's digital, digitized items, which are available online via our partners at the Minnesota Digital Library and the Hennepin County Library Special Collections, have been viewed an impressive 33,400 times this past year. Our collaborations will continue in 2023 to place more historic material online and expand access to these parks and community histories. Goals for this coming year include creating public-facing resources to help researchers find what they need and continuing to share stories of park history through our various communication channels. As NPRB celebrates its 140th anniversary this 2023, we will also look to our history to celebrate and reflect on our founding. With that, President Forney, I am done, thank you Commissioners for your time, and we're open for any questions, so thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Bangora, as usual, exciting things happening. Any questions, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Elper.
Thank you, President Forney. I find your updates very valuable, I just would like to state that first off, and just, just I'm curious, the Fire and Ice events happening around the city, is this an annual tradition, and just curious if it's been going on for a long time? I know I'm excited to attend a couple all bundled up this coming week.
Yes, President Forney and Commissioner Elper, yes, they're a tradition that, that has been going, I don't know all the details, I would have to then punt over to, of course, Assistant Superintendent Kell, but yeah, this has been a tradition that we've been doing, and they've been very popular, and yeah, it's one of our winter kind of staples and the work that we do, so we'd love to see you there too, so, and we can also share more specifics to where and when their events are happening. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you. All right, on to reports of appointees to outside boards, commissions, and committees, or committees, excuse me. Yes, Commissioner Abene.
Thank you, President Forney. I had a Board of Estimate and Taxation meeting on January 25th, it was a very short meeting, not a lot of business right now, but we received information regarding the upcoming sale of bonds based on last year's approved budgets, and then we also, as a body, approved, a council approved resolution for the reallocation of funds that were previously from a bonding source, and the funds will be distributed in an area that they were previously approved for, but they were excess funds. And the next meeting of the BET is on February 22nd.
Thank you for that report, any others? Not seeing any more. I would like to make an appointment. Leslie Mordarak, who has been serving on the Homegrown Minneapolis Food Council, is moving out of state, and so she has put in her resignation for that, stepping down, I guess is the way to say it. Anyway, thank you, Leslie, for your service, and I just, first of all, have to say, I can't remember how many, but I mean, there were amazing amount of applications of incredibly talented people. It was, it was a really difficult thing for me to take the decision, so I did engage Leslie as far as helping make the decision, and so Angela Janice Williams is our appointee for the Homegrown Minneapolis Food Council, that is an update for us as far as our appointments to commissions and committees. Moving on then, we have a few more minutes, so on to consent business. Take a motion on that, is there any that people would like to, Commissioner Menns?
Yes, President Forney. I would like to pull Agenda Item Resolution 2023-7.
Seven, okay. Any other? Okay. With that, I will move the remaining items on our consent agenda as a slate. Second? Thank you, okay. All those in favor, though, of the motion, please signify.
We got a second? It was Thompson?
Yeah.
Yes, she did, yeah. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries, okay, so pulling for discussion, Resolution 2023-7, somebody like to move that, please?
I would move Resolution 2023-7, Resolution Approving Amendment Number 1 to Contract Number 152516 with BIFs Inc. to furnish, deliver, and service portable restrooms in an amount not to exceed $600,000.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all right, so I would assume you would like, would you like a presentation, discussion on this item?
No, I did submit questions to the staff, and those questions were answered very clearly, and I appreciate the staff responding to this request. BIFs are something that is a consistent place of concern with constituents, I don't know if the other Commissioners have felt this, and I'm, I just wanted a little bit more information about how we spend our money with BIFs and what, what the plan is moving forward, and I did read through the responses, it looks like we've increased our amount spending on BIFs by almost double over the past three years, and I just thought that the board, that we needed to sort of put a little lens on that, and wonder if there's any sort of plan for the future around making some things more permanent or more stable in regards to our use of this portable technology.
Assistant Superintendent Barrett is moving towards the microphone, please, share with us.
Good evening, President Forney, Commissioner Menns. Yeah, so we did, we did share some of the background on the overall spending. This contract is for the entire organization. Environmental Stewardship uses about 80% of this contract for BIFs throughout the system. In some of that information we've shared with you, you'll notice that in 2020, with the pandemic, we almost doubled our, our annual expense in BIFs, and so, and we haven't returned to that pre-pandemic level. And so when it comes to the permanent structure, another thing of note is, the majority of the expense, or not, I should say, the most, the most spending happens in the regional park system, and so we get requests, you know, it'd be great to have a restroom option here, we can make that happen, of course, there's a cost to that. And so, when we look to like a long-term permanent, I think I would look to the, the master plans, and if those are called out, and then including, you know, like comfort stations in capital projects in the future is probably our best path forward of adding a more permanent restroom facility throughout the regional system and, and any other areas.
Are there questions?
Thanks, thank you Assistant Superintendent. No, I just feel like if we're going to have this increase in funding and we spend $600,000 on portable restrooms, why can't we create something that's a little bit more visually appealing to the park system and maybe something a little bit more permanent, but that's a larger discussion, and part of the discussion via email was to possibly put this as an agenda item for the Standards and Conduct Committee around discussion, as a discussion item, so I'd like it to just be that if we could get a discussion item around the future of BIFs in our system and what our plan is for those public restroom facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, I missed, Commissioner Musich, I'm going to go with.
Thank you, President Forney. As the Chair of the Operations and Environment Committee, I can work on getting a discussion item around restroom facilities added to the agenda. I know in the past, when the Board has discussed expansion of restrooms in a permanent fashion, the price tag on that is rather significant, and then the additional added demands on our maintenance staff is another component of that cost we need to take into consideration. We are right now understaffed in that capacity, so it would not just be a capital expense, but also that maintenance expense as well. So, it's a complicated issue, but I'm happy for us to discuss in committee, and I will get that added to a future agenda. Thanks.
Great. Not seeing any other lights, all those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That action carries, okay. Being the time, I think somebody's walking towards me, so I will, we have one person to speak, but I will talk about our open time. See now, thanks to all of you who want to share your thoughts, one person anyway, and ideas with us during open time before we start, and I want to provide an abbreviated version of open time on board, if all individuals wishing to speak may call in before noon the day of the meeting to be placed on the agenda, or can sign up at the board meeting prior to the start of open time. I will be calling on people on the sign-up list only. Open time for public input shall not exceed a total of 15 minutes with time limit to be allocated by me, the President. Please watch the timer up here to be considered of others here to speak, and stay within your allotted time. During open time, public testimony will be given without debate, and only clarifying questions from the Board will be allowed. Two types of items not appropriate for open time in order to protect the privacy of all individuals are pending litigation, personnel issues, so please refrain from commenting on these specific personnel issues. We will not tolerate discriminatory and/or harassing words directed at anyone, so please ensure that all comments you make tonight comply with that policy. This Board made the decision many years ago to operate This Board made the decision many years ago to operate under Robert's Rules of Order. Under Robert's Rules of Order, the ceding of time to another person is not allowed. So, only those signed up to speak may only speak for their allotted amount of time. We also request that each speaker provide his or her name and address. And we have one speaker today, and that is Roxanne O'Brien. Roxanne, please come forward, and I give you up to three minutes. Woo-hoo.
I have an extra minute today. I won't take it, but I'm going to just read a statement from Parks and Power at Hope Community, and then try to head over there, because we got open house tonight, so I was supposed to be there, but I got to be here. So, we had found out that there was going to be a proposal around limiting public comment, so it's my understanding now that it's been pulled from the agenda. However, I'm here, I'm going to read the statement, just in case it pops back up in the future. So, Parks and Power is concerned about whether limiting the amount of public comment time to once a month will actually assure transparency in the system. We know that attending the public comment section is already a barrier for folks most impacted by park-related and housing issues due to the time that it occurs, the lack of childcare, food, language interpretation, and other resources needed to ensure access. If the current methods to ensure public comment is already ineffective in bringing people to the public comment, then how does cutting the amount of time in half further this goal of transparency and communication? We strongly urge the Minneapolis Park Recreation Board Commissioners to vote against this amendment or anything like it in the future. If passed, an amendment like this would show us that in Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board's commitment to racial equity to the park system is only symbolic rather than active, rather than an active, ongoing process. We urge the Commissioners to follow through on their promises on making the park system equitable by voting no to this type of amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne. With that, then, I will close the open time and move then to Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, which, see now, is Commissioner Olson.
So, I would like to start off by moving Resolution 2022-335, a Resolution approving the draft 2023 NPRB State Legislative Agenda.
Second. Thank you. Okay, discussion on the item.
Yeah.
Commissioner Olson.
So, we have a couple of different staff amendments that came before us. The first ones we're going to be moving will just be making some numbers changes to our bonding requests. The first will be making it so that the North Commons Regional, Part II funding request is $12 million, and then the second change will be adding a dollar amount to the green, I believe it's the Green Parkway's one, and Path to Climate Resilience, to making that $13 million for a total of $74.3 million. So, I would like to move that staff amendment.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion on that item? Any discussion on that item? Not seeing any interest in discussing it and everything. All those in favor, then, of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That action carries. Carry on.
Yes, I would now like to move the second staff amendment, this one, to the Met Council Bonding item, and I would like to move, so Met Council Bonding, the 10 regional park implementing agencies are requesting on behalf of the Metropolitan Council $50 million for the regional park system bonding program, and the Metropolitan Council typically matches $2 for every $3, and then we'll delete, will match with $8 million in regional bonds. This includes the following NPRB regional projects: loose line, loose line regional trail, land acquisition and trail implementation, Shingle Creek Regional Trail Master Plan Implementation, Victory Worth Memorial Parkway Regional Trail Recreation Trail, and environmental improvements above the falls, regional park, Upper Harbor Terminal Park and Overall Master Plan Implementation, and Minneapolis Chain of Lakes Regional Park Master Plan Implementation.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion on the side of Commissioner Musich?
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify that we're striking the "will match with $8 million" from the sentence that's being updated?
Yes, we are.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Commissioner Olson? No? Okay. All right, anybody else discussion on this item? Okay. All those in favor of that amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That action carries. Anything more to carry on to? No? All right, so we have another item, though, for legislative, right? Oh, sorry. We have some votes.
I think, yeah, those were just staff amendments, right, that we were voting on? Yeah, so I have amendment to the state legislative agenda that I'd like to move.
Okay. All right.
I'd like to move that we modify the skate park language portion of the state legislative agenda to say, "Support fully funding the Minnesota State Skate Park Grants Program and seek other opportunities to fund and construct regional-sized skate parks in Minneapolis as outlined in NPRB's Skate Park Activity Plan."
Okay, hearing the second, anybody who wishes to discuss the matter? Commissioner Menz.
I mean, this is just simply a language to update what's currently happening at the legislature. The Senator Dibble is working on a program for Minnesota Skate Parks Grants Program, and just making sure that we're aware and that our legislative agenda folks are aware that that's coming through and that we would support that. It also puts a little bit more of a laser focus on regional facilities, which are larger-scale skate parks, which there has been some issues within the skate park community that we build little skate spots, but that we're in need of a regional-level park, which is in the master plan for Northeast Park, and I think at Lake Nacomis. There are two places where it could be possible at this point in the planning.
Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Any other discussion on the item? Any other discussion on the item? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, on then to the main motion, I think.
Madam Chair, Madam President.
Oh, yes.
If I could, Brian Rice, in my lobbyist hat for the Park Board. When I was just talking to Ms. Gokumayr, we were over at the Capitol today. Senator Patah has a bill in on our expand youth employment and training opportunities, and just reading this, we currently are getting $175,000 from the state for FY '22 and '23. He has a bill, oh, maybe we do have this covered, I'm sorry. We've asked for $800,000?
The bill is for $750,000, but we were asking for $800,000.
Okay, maybe, this may be, never mind. We've got, yeah, I just wanted to make sure our direction was clear, and as I read further, we, because Representative Hassan has expressed a big interest in the bill, too, so just, we had a hearing on it today, and we are aligned. I apologize, it's been a busy week getting the numbers straight, so.
Okay. Thank you. Good to know that things are going well.
I don't know about where, they're busy, I don't know.
Right.
They are busy. President Forney and Commissioners, I just wanted to give a really quick update, like context around the Governor's release budget as it relates to the parks, if I could just add that real quick.
Please.
So, for operations and maintenance, he has $12.49 million each year combined between lottery lieu and general fund dollars. This is a $2.5 million increase in general fund spending each year of the biennium. And then for the Parks and Trails Legacy, he's keeping it with the 40-40-20 formula, split between the metro parks, state parks through DNR, and the greater Minnesota parks, regional parks. So, that's not a change. He has a one-time provision in there, asking for $12 million, which would receive a Met Council match, I think, of $8 million, and this is to support, he calls it modernization of parks and trails, but it sounds like it could be spent on improvements, rehab, trails, all kinds of things, if it's adopted. The less positive news is the amount he has in there for regional parks bonding is only $3 million. That's what he had in his budget last year that was not adopted, but unfortunately, it's still a very low amount, and that's really in part why the 10 implementing agencies are seeking a much more robust funding of $50 million, because $3 million, I mean, not getting any money last year caused us to have to really readjust our master plan, so we hope that we'll see more than $3 million in that regional bonding. Yeah, I just wanted to give you that context.
Thank you for the update. Is there anything that we can be doing individually or as Board to help support it?
Well, I think when you have opportunities to speak with elected officials to advocate on behalf of these programs would be fantastic.
Do so. Okay.
And I know, Madam President, you're busy, but Pamela, Ms. Johnson is here.
Up to the microphone, sorry.
Thank you, Brian Rice, again, for the Park Board. Ms. Gokumayr was over there, Ms. Frankie Johnson was over there today. It has been really busy. There's a couple of meetings next week of the Metro delegation. We've been working with Chairs Olson and Bennie on that. Frankie sends out a weekly report. We encourage you to read them to give updates that we're sharing with you, Commissioners, the staff, the legislators. It's, they've only been at it a month, but it seems like it's already three or four months. I see Commissioner Olson over there, who's also a staff member, Olson, at the Capitol, so it's been, he can attest to it, it's just been very busy. We appreciate the clarity and the direction. We also know that things change, and so there has to be some level of flexibility. We stay in touch with you, Madam President, and our Chairs about it. And yeah, it's just, there's a lot going on, a lot of moving parks, parts, and parts, too. And.
A nice slip.
Yeah, I mean, we expect a bonding bill rather quickly. I mean, one other thing that was just testified on yesterday was the lottery in lieu. We've had that on our agenda to get that money back. That's kind of subsumed within the Governor's request of the $2.5 million. Roughly, we get 20% of those dollars if that all went, this is to help our, meet our O&amp;M costs, that's about a half a million dollars a year. You know, I would encourage, I've heard this Board talk about you need more to take care of what you got. Well, that's what that money's for. If you want to use it that way, you can put it into capital, or you can put it into operating, that's up to the Board to decide. So, we're pursuing all of these items. There's a hearing next week on the 40-40-20. There are these legislative meetings, so I don't think there's a day that goes by over there where we're not working on one thing or two or more, and it's hard, it's hard for me to keep up, and you're paying me to do that. So, I'm glad that Pamela's there and Frankie is, too. And if you've got any questions, just let us know. I mean, if there's an issue or you think something's not right, we work for all of the Commissioners. Give us a call if you've got a question, we can try to straighten it up or talk to your Chairs. They're both over there now, so there they are.
Grateful for your service and the update. So, on to then the Resolution 2022-335. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That action carries.
All right, I would now like to move Resolution 2022-337, Resolution adopting the 2023 NPRB draft federal legislative agenda.
Second. Any discussion on the item? Any discussion on the item? See no lights? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Action carries. Okay, on to unfinished business. Somebody like to meet the next resolution?
I can move Resolution 2023-11. It's a Resolution approving assignment of rights in the lease agreement between the Hennepin County Housing and Redevelopment Authority and the Metropolitan Council, Contract Number 161035, regarding a portion of property known as Market Square, and allowing such rights to be assumed by the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Any discussion? Commissioner Musich?
Thank you, President Forney. This has been a long time in the works, and I am thrilled to see that there is a new park in this part of town. It's been identified as needing one for a long time, and I think people are excited that the farmer's market gets to have a permanent home with better infrastructure. I know I enjoyed visiting it last summer, so if you haven't been, please come on out to Market Square. It's now a park, and there's tons of great vendors there that would love to provide you with food and goods. I highly recommend the sweet potato donuts. They are fantastic breakfast and help you to then buy lots of vegetables instead of sweet things. So, I got, thanks.
Any comments from Assistant Superintendent Schroer?
President Forney, I'll make just one comment. This has been a long time in the making, I think it was October 2019, when the Parkland Dedication Agreement was actually approved by the Board. It took a long time to work through the registered land survey for the county's actions on that, but I will tell you that the park is actually larger than it was when it was approved. There's actually two tracks, so the park now reaches all the way to Lake Street, which actually provides some greater continuity to the street life and activity there. And I think as I've been talking to Shane Stenzel and his staff, it's only going to get better with the market activities and the things we're working with the neighborhood to make happen in that space.
I just want to acknowledge, I believe that there's an anniversary today. I think Assistant Superintendent Schroder has been around the block a couple of days, and I just want to acknowledge, thank you for your service. Okay, not seeing any other lights. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That ex, huh?
I forgot to abstain. I can't vote on this one. You can say that now.
Oh, and speaking of, this is a lease agreement, so we need to do a roll call vote? Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so we're going to have to do a roll call vote, and I believe that Vice President Smith is recusing herself.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I have to recuse myself from this vote as it's in my neighborhood. Wow, there's no monetary gain, there is a conflict of interest.
Great, well, the Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer, absent. Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Musich?
Aye.
Commissioner Menz?
Aye.
Commissioner Elper?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennie?
Aye.
Vice President Forney?
Vice President Forney?
Oh, sorry. President, President Forney.
That's okay. Aye. Controller I am today.
Two different versions. Okay, so I have seven ayes, one absent, and one recused.
Thank you for that. Okay, on to our next resolution, if somebody would like to read that for me, please.
I can read it. Resolution 2023-13, Resolution authorizing the Superintendent to submit impurity order North Commons Regional Vision, Part II Funding, $12 million. Grand Rounds Missing Link Phase One Implementation, $12.3 million. Waterworks Phase Two, $5 million. Green Infrastructure and Habitat Restoration in Minneapolis Creeks, $12 million. Minneapolis Green Parkway's as a path to climate resilience, $13 million, and New Cedar Riverside Center, $20 million, for a total of $74.3 million. Should Minnesota management and budget request proposals for the 2023 State of Minnesota State Capital Budget.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion on the item? Was that, Commissioner Menz?
Hi, I did have, I sent out an amendment on this, and I just wanted to clarify, I'm going to pull the amendment from the Board Agenda, and just wanted to clarify that the intent was not to put two awesome projects at odds with each other. It was just to simply look at this year's agenda and think about what projects are in our priority list with the Agenda. It was a mistake to submit that amendment, but I do want to say that both of these projects are probably some of the projects that I'm most excited about in the system, and the intent was not to diminish or reduce any sort of impact that either one of these projects has throughout the system. So, I'm going to pull that amendment, okay, y'all?
Seeing no other lights and everything. All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That action carries. And I'm delighted to say that I will adjourn the meeting here at 5:49. And handed, oh, excuse me, I did it again, didn't I? Petitions and communications, okay. I'm going to start out with you, Commissioner Menz.
I'm going to pass.
Commissioner Elper?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say I am super excited to be going on a tour of the South Service Area, not South Service Area, that...
South Service Center.
What? South Side Service Center. Center. There we go. On Friday. I'll learn how to say it at the tour, so that'll be my main, my main goal. And I just would like to extend the invite to fellow commissioners who haven't done the tour yet, that it's already pre-planned, and if we have under the requisite number of commissioners and you're free on Friday and would like to join, everything's already planned, and I'd be happy if you accompany me.
What time?
Great question. I believe it's at 9:00 AM. There we go, 9:00 AM. And that's all I have.
Great. Commissioner Musich?
Thank you, President Forney. The past 10 days or so, we've, we've had the U S Pond Hockey Championships on Lake Nacomis, and ice thankfully was stable for that event. Thousands of people from all over the world came and played pond hockey on the lake, and it was really fun to just see how much fun everyone was having. My husband and I went and walked across the lake and hiked out for a while. He was dressed up as a polar bear. That was a real winner with both children and adult hockey players alike. But it was just, it's super fun to just see the enthusiasm in which people embrace the outdoors in our, in our system and, and each other as they partake in the events that get scheduled throughout the season. So thank you to everyone that was involved in helping make that event a success. The next big exciting event happening in my district is the Polar Plunge. So I have created the Park Fun Cicles team, and I am hopeful that we, as a unit, most of us that are excited about doing zany things, will get together again in March and plunge into the frigid waters of Lake Nacomis as we embrace winter together. I know it's not everybody's thing, so please don't feel like I'm trying to guilt you into coming. I think it's fun, and if, and if you want to try it out, I would love to see you join us there. So, yeah, let me know if you have questions about that. Happy to talk, talk to you about it offline. I also have lots of fun tips on, on how to look awesome while jumping into the lake if you should need that kind of advice. So I got, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Um, I will just say that I'm cold just thinking about it, but I'm in, because I'm always in for those things. So, I would concur. We can, you know, it's a good time, and it's eight seconds of pure, well, you know. Okay.
Refreshment.
That's it.
That's it? Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Bennie?
I'll pass, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Thompson?
Olson, I will...
Olson, one of those sons, sorry.
I have an announcement to make. No, I will also pass.
Excuse me. Vice President Smith?
Um, one, it's Black History Month, so happy Black History Month as, as we embark on furthering ourselves in education in that space. Two, the last time we were here for a meeting, folks who work in youth development suffer a great setback when a staff in St. Paul, one of, a youth worker shot a young man in their park, in, in the St. Paul Rec Center. And so, in conversation and community with a ton of youth workers, I just want to remind our staff that it's very important that we're here, and that we also practice the same de-escalation tactics that we ask young people to practice every day, but that as a community that we have conversations about the fragility of everyone. It's not just young people and families who are going through things, but also our staff who, who show up every single day. And so that's just, has been a really tragic story for folks who work in youth development, and what it means for many of our parks where young people maybe are questioning if they're safe in our spaces. And that is absolutely the last thing that we need, is for young people choosing to not be engaged in parks and productive and safe spaces for them. And so, I, I just want to give, one, giant kudos to youth workers who've been helping young people navigate this extremely emotional and confusing space, and acknowledge that the work is extremely difficult for everyone. And so, I just want to lift our team up as they are interacting with young people day in and day out, and just sort of reassure that young people that they are safe, and the parks are a great place to process some of those emotions, because we have really amazing staff in caring adults around, whether they are youth workers or even like some of the maintenance folks that I've met in parks who are just like, "I love young people, and this is why I'm doing this work," because they get to be in community every single day. So, that's, that's all I got, and I'm excited about all of the activities that are planned in our park system to celebrate Black History Month, and then when we head into March for Women's History Month, because I fall in both of those categories.
Cool. Thank you. Well, I also will pass, so I, here before 6 o'clock, I will declare the meeting adjourned and move it on to Co-Chair Thompson for the Administration and Finance Committee.
Thank you very much, President Forney, at a time being 5:56. I will now call to order the Administration and Finance Committee. Can the secretary please call the roll?
Vice President Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Musich?
Here.
Commissioner Menz?
Here.
Co-Chair Thompson?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Uh, thank you very much. Would anyone, let's see, like to approve the agenda? Can we approve the agenda?
I would move to approve the agenda.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. That passes. Approval of the minutes. Would someone like to move that, the minutes?
I would move the minutes from November 30th, 2022.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. On to our resolutions. Would anyone like to move our resolution?
I can move Resolution 2023 dash 8, Resolution Approving a Lease Agreement with DNA Wellness LLC, Leasing Commercial Space at 1828 Marshall Street Northeast, Unit Number 14C, Located Within the Above the Falls Regional Park for a Term of Six Months Effective March 1st, 2023.
Thank you. Does it, does anyone have any questions on this or like to see any extra information about it? Yes, Commissioner Menz?
I did, so the staff presented me with some answers to some questions, but, um, so this space is right, for those of you who don't know this space, it's right next to Psycho Susie's. So it's, it's a really valuable piece of land that we're intending to utilize in the future for regional, or is it Regional Park? Or maybe Regional Park.
Above the Falls Regional Park.
I actually had some questions about how the money that we take in for a lease on this property impacts the future, and I don't know if I'm fully clear about how that money that we take in for the, for the lease agreement impacts what we do on the land in the future. I think that there's an arrangement where we utilize that for destruction of the property later. Can somebody clarify that for me? Like what, where the money goes and where it's held and how much is in there maybe?
Co-Chair Thompson and Commissioner Menz, I'll try to reflect on the amount that's in, that was in the email from Christine Downey. But the dollars that we collect are used for a number of purposes. One is perpetuating the building. There's repairs that often have to go on in the building. We, we have maintenance staff that we contract to be there, and the, just the cost of doing business in, as a commercial building, had to be covered out of the rents that are received. The total amounts of rents that have been received since 2015, I believe, is in the neighborhood of $622,000. Of course, there's some that has been paid down for some of those other costs. We will be using those accrued funds to eventually raise the building, and it's a particularly difficult building to eliminate being not only on the river, multiple levels, but significant amounts of concrete. It used to be a sawmill, I believe, and the, the construction with concrete will take quite a while to remove. So the, the demolition costs, as we get to that eventually, will be significant, but that's why we are trying to reserve these funds. We will get to a point perhaps where we can't afford to invest in the building any longer. It's not practical with the dollars that we take in to perpetuate it. But until that time, we'll keep perpetuating, because we have a series of tenants who are able to occupy the building for rents that are quite affordable, I would say.
Yes, that was clear in the email. And so, we have $622,000 in the account for future demolition, or that's the total we brought in and then we've had to spend out some, some funds?
Co-Chair Thompson, Commissioner Menz, the latter. That we've, we've collected, I believe, $622,000 since we started operating that building as a commercial space, and some portion of that has been paid out. I can't tell you what the total remaining and the fund is.
And one, one more question. Do we have any other, are there any other facilities along that Above the Falls play where this is also in play, where we're leasing out and collecting funds for future demolition?
Um, Co-Chair Thompson, Commissioner Menz, there's actually a series of them. I'll try and remember what they all are, but the, the largest one is actually on this side of the river, just south of Law. We have, we have a building, it's called the, the Andrews Building, or some people call it the Pickle Factory. It's the large building just on the south side where there's a number of tenants, and that building is significantly larger, on a larger piece of, piece of ground. On the, on the east bank of the river, we have the first parcel that we purchased from Mary Lee Hardenberg, and we have a residential, that's a residential property, and it's been perpetuated as a residential use. We have a, a residential license for, for that property that we've been keeping, and that might be it. If I think of others, I can get it to you, but those are the, those are the major properties that are coming to mind right now.
Just one final thing. I'm really appreciative of the fact that we're providing some adequate housing and rental space for people in northeast Minneapolis without trying to like gouge the price. I think that that's really, it was really helpful and nice to hear that. So, and thanks to Christine Downey for giving me that information.
Are there any other questions about this item? Seeing no lights? All those in favor of Resolution 2023 dash 8, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Would someone like to move the next resolution? The final one?
I'll move Resolution 2023 dash 12. It's a resolution approving a license agreement with Hennepin County for a storage room located at 2125 East Lake Street adjacent to Market Square, a Minneapolis neighborhood park in the Corcoran neighborhood.
Thank you. Would anyone like, have any questions or would like a discussion? Seeing no lights? I will now ask all those in favor of Resolution 2023 dash 12, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recused? Excellent. Thank you so much, Vice President Smith. That passes. And with that, I will adjourn the Administration and Finance Committee.
Fastest meeting ever.
Yeah, I was just thinking.
Jennifer, you are so plunging with us.